All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is Monday, June 4th, 2018. It's the Moretown Select Board. We have a full board. And tonight's meeting, we're starting with a public hearing for the relocation of Trail 17, otherwise had been known as Block 1 Trail, but legal name, Trail 17, access relocation. We also got town attorney Paul Gillis. He is on speakerphone. Paul, can you hear us?
I can hear you fine, thank you.
All right. So, um, tonight, at 5 o'clock, we did a site walk over at the proposed, new proposed trail. This has been something that has been, I would go on upwards of six or seven years since I got on the board. There was questions on this trail. We did a survey, found out where the original trail ultimately was located, and since have worked with landowner Cal Lodgeett to locate that trail so it does not go through basically the septic area or the corner of his garage. So it is just a trail relocation. We also pointed out tonight where the temporary easement is on the corner of Case property. And that's to be just used for simple access if there's any great or permanent access that goes through the indicated trail, which was just east of that entrance. At this point, Paul, is there anything you want to add?
No, just beginning.
So at this point, will take any questions or concerns?
Let me suggest that before you hear committee, let me swear again.
Okay. So if there's anyone here that is intending to speak tonight, they'd just swear you in, or Paul can actually swear you in. If you could raise your right hands.
Ready?
All ready?
You all swear, don't need to...
As a group, yes.
...case owner to the right of this board. I'm sorry?
Paul, can you go over that? We had a question. So this is as a group, yes? So if you plan on providing any testimony or speaking, please do listen. One more time, Paul.
Okay, sir. You all swear, case owner to the right of this board, you all as a group, no need to ask, it's all triple, not the question, it's the show, how you got it?
Yes.
Affirmative by everyone? All right. Now, behalf of you take testimony. Is there anyone who would like to just state your name?
Scott Morrow, Winley Forest Street, acting as representative to Montgomery Timber So in 2007, we used, I'm gonna go up the road, just, in 2007, we used an access point from the mountain road across a stretch of land over the brook, a temporary bridge that we placed in. We worked with Cal on that and came around the corner and put the bridge in, did a logging job, and at the end, we took the bridge out. Moving up the road, we were not aware at the time that the X, the trail, number 17, is where it was shown to us by the Select Board this evening, at the location that we looked at, which is the location of the septic and the corner of the house. We looked at the, um, the trail that's proposed, which is a couple hundred yards up the road, which is about 300 feet long, and is in excess of 22%, we'll call it 22% slope, from the north side of the brook up to the so-called exist, the so-called existent legal trail. As a representative of Montgomery Timber Company, we'd like to, we object to the option of moving to the proposed trail as, unless the town is willing to pay for all improvements and make it within acceptable water quality management practices required by the state of Vermont as a truck road. So we oppose.
All right. Any other testimony?
My name is Addison Kazmeric. I am a consulting forester with Greenleaf Consulting. I'm also here representing Montgomery Timber Company. And in addendum to Scott's comments, the acceptable management, acceptable water management practices for water quality on logging jobs in Vermont, logging names, acceptable grade for logging roads is about 7%. So it would need to be regraded to about negative 18%. There is a ledge that is just before the corner where it starts to head, kind of a strong northwest corner, where there's a grade stake, center line grade stake, so that would need to potentially be blasted in order to allow for that 7% grade. I also asked a question today during the site visit about the turning radius from the proposed trail onto the existent legal trail, and I was given the response that there would be no allowance for an additional turning radius or turning berth on that for logging trucks, but rather they would need to stay within the two rod limitations of the easement, which is just not admissible for a logging truck to make that kind of turning radius. Those are my additional comments at this time. I also object to the proposed trail.
Paul, do you have any questions?
The first witness mentioned these water quality standards. Is there, is there any documentation to go with that?
You mentioned water quality standards. Okay, move your arm.
Please ask me for a few regulations.
So I don't, I do not have this stat, the regulation with me, but they're readily available on the internet. And even, even if we were to build that road within the standard, where, how are we gonna gain 18%, reduction of 18% plus or minus slope within a 60-foot right-of-way? I mean, yeah, within a 60-foot right-of-way, and the permitting costs alone? Because we'd have to build the abutments, we can't be in the brook, we'd have to build the abutments in the town road. We'd have to get it permitted, and we'd have to build a truck road, a bridge that would cross, cover 99,000 blocks. So it's, if you were to look at the site, Mr. Gillis, Attorney Gillis, you would find that it's not, there's no way you could build a road in the proposed site.
I, I have to leave the site. Um, this is a, a layout of a trail, not a class four road or a class three road. Trail, that's clear.
What's the purpose of the trail?
Provide access to the land.
So we already have access, why can't I walk across the current access?
Well, if the board decides to make a change, the access will be on the trail.
So I could park on the property without blocking the access to the trail, and I could walk through the Lodgeett's yard, across their septic system, across the corner of their house, anytime of day or night, and walk up to that property, onto the, across the brook, and I, nobody can stop me, is that correct?
I'm not prepared to make that. I'm not sure there's a right mark.
Okay, so if I could park anywhere, what I'm saying is, somebody drops me off, and I want to...
It's a trail you can go across.
Walk across that trail, anytime, day or night, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, I cannot be stopped.
Well, that's the purpose of the trail.
Okay? And there's no additional purpose of the trail, except by, granted by the Select Board?
That's correct. There's no underlying inherent rights to cross people's property.
And, so, can the Select Board grant access across a legal trail for uses other than walking?
They could, but not at this hearing.
Okay, but they could. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Gillis, additional questions?
Michael Brown with F&amp;W Forestry.
Why don't you go ahead and move out, Michael, in case you have...
Okay, I can move out. So, Michael Brown with F&amp;W Forestry, representing Timber Res Partners 2, AK. I was always under the assumption that whether it be a class three, four, or a legal trail, it's all a legal public right-of-way, and you are legally permissible to do anything that's legal or permissible in the state of Vermont or in that town, in that right-of-way. And that includes improving it with Select Board and usually town road form and approval for logging access or permanent access. Is that correct, or?
We have a process in town. If you want to work in the town right-of-way, there is a permit process.
Right, that's correct. So, so if that's a legal trail, which is a public right-of-way, kinda like Scott was saying, I mean, right, that truck road's there, so if it was granted by the town, put a truck bridge back in that spot, you could use it to put trucks across again, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so it's a, it's a public right-of-way, so anybody in the world, right now, can walk right on that public right-of-way and do whatever they want because it's a public...
As a town trail, you can walk on that trail.
That's correct.
That is correct.
And improve it, I'm talking at a board. And if the Select Board approves, we can improve upon the trail.
Right. Again, any town access, whether it's a trail, a road, you can, we have permits, you can send in a permit to the town, and the road forming looks at it, and if it's something we want to do, we can, but again, it's up to the, up to the board. Guy?
That, that was a town highway downgraded to a legal trail. When it got downgraded to a legal trail, it became everybody's property owner legal right-of-way. It's, it's everybody's property owner that own property up there, it became their legal right-of-way. It might be a legal trail to everybody else, but it's their right-of-way. So it's not just for walking, it might be walking for everybody else in town, but the people that own it up there, it's their legal right-of-way to their land because it was a town highway.
It's always, it's a town trail now, and whatever the town trail is...
And if you look up the state statutes, which I have copies of, when it was a town highway and gets downgraded, it becomes their right-of-way.
That's right.
That is correct.
Cal?
That, I've been there longer than any of the people there. Where the town thought the trail was, the gentleman over there that worked for the logging company, they couldn't make that turn then, when they thought, you know, when they asked me, Cal, can we cut trees on your property, have the excavator come out and dig it way up, we'll put it all back, there was no problem. I said, "Sure, no problem." And they did, they done an excellent job, because they couldn't make the turn there then. Now, I mean, it went on, and the town determined that the trail was never there. You guys had it surveyed, and Mr. Townsend determined the trail was never there. It hasn't been told where it was, but what they're saying is now, right through my yard, said I built the garage wrong, I was told where I had to build that garage, where I parked my cars, the original house was there. Now, I have somebody that I have, hopefully still lives, 90-some-odd years old, lived on that road, said there was never a bridge there, period, because that was all farmland, it was all fields. And it was never, you know, never a bridge there, there was a blacksmith shop there because I had to build a garage in the exact same spot, town told me, at the pre-existing one. Couldn't, now, I did get permission to move the house, but the system, I didn't put the system in, it was grandfather, it was already there, otherwise, wouldn't have been a permit issue. That's why when we went to mediation, you know, it was determined, since you own land up the road, and being a trail, town's not responsible for putting in a bridge or anything.
Right.
And it's been, as far as I can remember, a trail, there was, there was a bridge there, but not suitable for big equipment, you know, but the farmers all up through there, Larry Sumner was the one that says, because his dad had this farm there, said, "Yeah, you know, they put bridges in wherever they wanted to, to get across with their land, cut the hay and stuff."
Cal, how long, um, the access, where you, you let the loggers kind of circle around?
You let the loggers, it's my way, excuse me. Excuse me, we never, we never owned that land, we had no right to let it go through there, ever. We didn't, our D, our name was never on that property.
Yeah, down with Travis is my, my name was never on that...
So I don't know why you're violating us, because we only owned on the other side.
I own it on the other side.
We never owned that property.
Would you let me finish my question?
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
Well, I just wanted to make that clear.
How long had access, how long had people been using that, who there?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I'd say at least 30 years.
Okay, I, just a question, you, you brought it up, so I was asking, the guy just wanted, it's, sir, in the back here.
Hi, Vince Rooney. I own the land abutting the Fox Street land, and which is affected by this access road. I just have a general question for the town, so...
Did you, was it Vince you said?
Vince.
Could you mind moving up, so...
Yeah, sure.
Take a seat, man. Take a roll in the seat.
So I just have a general question, and it's sort of relative, but this discussion over this town road and access to it, it affects property that's now owned above Cox Brook Road, which has now become landlocked because of access rights. Now, if the town is going, like, my house is located up on Condon Road. At one point, it was a, a class three road, it was thrown up to be a class four road. So I maintain that road. The front part of that road is owned by the Case family, the Case family trusts now. Okay, so we have a joint agreement, I know Lou Case, and I basically maintain the whole road, and I take care of it, I put my own gravel on it, and, because I need access to get to my house. What is the general requirement, and this is probably a legal question, if the town has sold a piece of property located up on the mountain above, which has to have permissible rights to have access to, what's the minimum class road that needs to be provided to have access to that? Because there's a lot of property sitting up there owned by several people, and now it's landlocked. And it's been this situation for eight years. Now, I'm not looking to piss anybody off, but I just want clarity on this, because I think everybody deserves, you know, opinion. I can get to this road by walking through the woods and walking all the way around my property, which I shouldn't have to do, but it's not, you know, inaccessible to me. I just have to go charging through the forest to get to it. I've seen people walking through the river, the little creek there on the side to get up on it, because they don't want to get anybody upset, and that's how they climb up onto the road. So the question, as a Select Board, when you sell a piece of property that's located several hundred yards from the road, the Snipworth doesn't sell any property. If, whatever, you lease a piece of property, someone buys a piece of land up there, there are several people in this room that own property up there, there are buildings up there, okay? How do people gain access to that? What is the minimum class road that is required for access to that?
Well, there's a trail, that's the minimum right there, and that...
What's the definition of a trail? Is that a foot trail? Because a trail can mean a lot of different things.
A trail is, it's two rods wide.
What's the, what's the width of two rods wide?
That's roughly 33 feet.
Okay, so that's a road.
It's like 16 and 5.
And that means it's, and by your definition of a trail, meaning that's not maintained.
Correct.
Correct.
So...
What?
You have down by Larry Sumner and down that way, you had a different class, like he's talking about, it's up to, and I think Ray will tell too, or he knows, you can have built houses there, you've got to bring it up at your own expense, put the culverts in the way the town wants them, make the road width, because you do, uh...
I don't think that's his question, Lee.
No, he wanted to know, he wanted to know.
Can I clarify something on Rooney's behalf? That is legal trail 21. That is not Condon Road. That is legal trail 21.
Yeah.
No one's saying it's Condon Road.
Right. Well, you said this.
No, he asked.
He was talking about something different.
Tong, he asked, how you, you know, if somebody builds a house up there, how does they...
Right.
The town will take, because they did on...
Takes so many...
Up above Sumner, some branches off, I forget the picture.
Yes, and if someone builds a house, it is a trail.
Okay, so I'm, all right, let's just say, I'm an outsider, I come in and I approach the town, and there's a piece of land that's available that someone wants to sell me, okay? I ask to purchase it, I get the permits, I purchase this piece of land. There has to be access to that land, A, if there is, if I want to put a house up there, I have to run utilities up there, if, if it's not a cab.
Right.
If I choose, and I need, if I want to drive to it, if it's permissible at my cost, I would have to put infrastructure in to meet that requirement. What is the town's minimum requirement to have access to, is it two rods wide?
Just by name really only, that this is a trail, and there is legal access to it.
If it needed a bridge, you'd have to put it in, on a trail...
Now, you understand the conundrum here, it's because, what we're talking about here now is that you have landlocked property because of this situation.
Since it has water.
And it's going to go across a waterway, which is going to create an environmental issue.
It's always gone across the waterway.
I understand, but it's going, it's, it's an environmental issue now, especially after Irene, because the Environmental Protection Agency in Vermont is gonna create all kinds with Act 250, issues with any kind of building codes, to get anything going across there. So what is the best solution that someone who has an investment of logging up there, which I could potentially have at some point, to obtain the resources up there, cost effectively enough, without me having to, having to have to put more money than what I would log to get to it? I mean, we know what the...
The town, the town is not gonna provide you the resources.
It's not about the town, bro, it's, there has to be an access road, there has to be a need to get to this...
No, but there does not. It's the, up to the person who purchased the property should have known beforehand what the access was.
But it's been that, but that, okay, I got that, that's understandable, that's a completely valid argument to this day. Prior to this day, in the past, that was logged land, correct? What was done historically to remove timber from there? Claire Laitford, how many years did Claire Laitford own that property? And how many years did Claire Laitford log that property? And how did Claire Laitford remove it?
So I think...
I don't know, it's before my time, I have my property.
So Scott, Scott was just talking earlier, and he said, I think in '07, they came in and they put a bridge across, and they had...
Right, that, that's, that's his company doing that.
Right.
Right, I was talking about Claire Laitford, like, I'm here 22, 23 years, we've had the property, Seans very owned it before we did, okay? Claire Laitford had the property up there, so I guess what I'm asking is, is that grandfather prior, they had access to that, and now there is no access to what was in the past?
That's because unfortunately, where they had the access was not the legal trail.
So somebody, that, so this is, this is what I'm trying to get to. So what was happening in the past shouldn't have been happening.
That's correct, absolutely.
Okay. And...
So what I, I think...
The understanding then is that, going forward, it's a change because what they were doing in the past was not supposed to be done, even though it was done for how many years.
I think you said in the, sometimes in the 70s, people said they were using that, that access across there, I, you know, we had...
Like, this town has been there 90, I mean, your family's been there years.
Right, where his house is in there.
So, he's been there, he's been there a long time.
So it has been a long time, that, that was what was used for access.
Right, and he's been there the whole time, correct?
I guess, I mean, ask that.
Yeah, and where you, I went over then, over that...
Ever since, we went there, there was documents about trying to get you guys to please get them out of my yard.
Right.
The problem is that Select Boards in the past have failed to do their job correctly. It's a drawn hard...
So the Select Boards in the past that approved Claire Laitford to drive through their property and log it?
No, they never, they never listened to us.
It was later, when Laitford went up there and logged, they asked me, can we put a bridge in, a temporary thing?
But who provided permits to that?
These people did.
Who provided the permits to Claire Laitford to log? Because it said, it doesn't get logged overnight, it gets logged over a series of weeks or months, or whatever it takes.
Loggers' rules are different, he can, he can get access to property.
But you understand the point, right, Mike?
Right, it was, it was used for umpteen years for access.
But who was used? Was the property used, or was he also used? And did the town, not you guys, because this was obviously a different Select Board, but the point for me is that you're trying to resolve a situation to the benefit of them, so they no longer, but it's also...
Travis, that's, you're out, you really, you can't.
Okay? All right. Is there happy medium? Because you can't turn around and tell people who have had access to it, the wrong property up there, you no longer have access to it, because the past 150, 200 years, we've done this, and now you just can't do it anymore?
No, I'm doing it on the right of way.
So, 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 let me, Vince, let me address, let me address where you, and then we can, we can go on. So, again, when I got on the board, it was in '11, and I think at that point is when it came to us, Mr. Martin, and last name's the same, we have no relation, we never knew each other since, came to the board and couldn't get across the access.
To his camp, yeah, I understand, I know that.
Right, they were still caught up. So that's when we looked into it, we were trying to figure out, what's the problem? I was on the board, Ray was on, Cal wasn't, Case, I don't think John had been on. We were just trying to figure out, what is legal, what is the best way?
Right.
We want access for everyone, we want the Lodgeett's to be happy, we're trying to figure out what works here. So, what we had, we had a survey done by Townsend, American Engineers, what it is. That's when he located that trail that goes through the corner of this, this garage and over the septic tank.
Over the septic tank, right.
And that, we had a site...
Which is different than where they were using it.
Which was different than where they were, been used, and Lodgeett's prior to that had been saying, that wasn't the legal area, but it had been going on for years and years, just, that's the way it had been. No one knows how it got there, why it got there, but that's where everyone was crossing, just the way it happened to be. Everyone at that point accepted it, it wasn't a problem, people got along, that's what, things happen in life, I don't know what happens, people don't get along, things, whatever. So that, then there's, for lack of a better word, feuding or something, that wasn't gonna work, we realized that. Going through Mr. Lodgeett's septic, there was garage, it's not gonna work either, it just is not gonna work. So that's where we looked, we did walks along that road, just trying to figure out, what is the best access point for you, for timber, for everyone? We're looking for a win-win situation. We had, I don't know how many, and it's documented in all this paperwork here, site visits, and we had, Mr. Martin, you know, verbally, do you accept this, is this good? Everyone that we could get there that had a dog in the fight, we certified letters, and I know every person who has a D touching this property has got a certified letter, so don't say you don't, because I've got, I got copy so. That includes everybody in this building tonight. So everyone was well aware of this, and it was, and so what we were trying to do is to gain the access to you guys provide a trail. Now, trail is not a class three road, a class four road, a trail is a trail, and if someone in, someone may have the definition of a trail with...
All right, just some clarity, when we're talking about a trail here, we're talking about basically two pins in the woods, okay? There is no trail or road.
Right, and that's, if that's...
You're walking up the steep incline, you're walking across the water, there is no...
So that's where, that's where the disconnect is, because legally defined, a trail does not have to be a well cut out to run.
I understand.
That's, a trail needs to be providing, this is legal access, point A to point B. And that's what we are trying to do.
I understand that. But you have to also understand from a business perspective, someone else on this side fence, not me particularly, but I'm just saying, someone who has invested interests in the property above that, that are not going to sit well with that. For the simple reason that you have landlocked their property with the current trail that you are recommending.
How was it, wait, you just tell us the...
No, because it's just, you can't access it without putting in a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of permitting process to bring in heavy equipment. It's just common sense. Anybody that works...
But that's no different than it was before.
No, that's not necessarily 100% true, but I'm not saying that that's where it should go. Please understand, I'm not saying it should go over his septic tank and through his garage. All I'm trying to say is that the solution is probably not the best solution as recommended. And I understand this wants to be put to bed because a lot of money has been spent on it, my tax dollars, harder work, and many, many years of the select board dealing with this. And a lot of aggravation for this family, who are my neighbors, and a lot of aggravation for a lot of the people who are involved in this. But the solution that you are providing is not going to be a solution because it just, practicality is not legit for somebody who wants logging up there. Any logger is going to look at that as...
All right, so what, what would your solution be?
I don't have a solution because honestly, I just found out about this in a recent letter that I received two weeks ago. I know this has been going on for eight years, but I've been getting letters and tidbits because this has been court battles. There's no reason for me to get involved in the court battles on it. I don't want to make enemies with my neighbor. I want to be good neighbors with everybody that's in this room. Okay? My interests are not in creating problems. My interests are not, in my best interest to create problems, this select board. I'm trying to be practical. Like I said, I've been here 20 something years. I like living in Moretown and I want Moretown to succeed as a town. I do business here in Northfield and I think minds need to get together and just look at things ration... I'm sorry, rationally, because I think you guys are kind of jumping through conclusions and, because this has been going on so long, just to try to put it away. And I don't think you're going to get...
We've spent a lot of time on this.
I know. I've been, I've been here since the time it started. I understand. I am, I've been watching this from the start.
So, Scott, did you have anything else to say? Thank you, Vince.
So I've got three questions. I'll start with the simplest one first.
All right.
We found out about this about the end of April of this year. How long has the town actually been discussing this with the Blodgets?
It's been a while. I know, we sent you a letter.
Just a question.
You sent a letter in 2010.
Because you guys keep saying, we've been at this a long time. So, what, is it a long time since April 27th, when we first got notified?
No.
We sent you this.
Certified.
Certified mailing on 8/17/16 and some, I don't know whose signature that is from October 10th.
Okay. So the 7th, July of 16?
August of 16 and this was, can you hear me, Paul?
Yes.
This was sent to everyone on the service list. Sent was a copy of the proposed new access.
Which is the same, same access?
Yeah, same access here.
July of 16?
Of 16, yeah.
And this is a copy of the proposed survey.
Okay.
We sent this to Timbervest as well, or Fountainport, or Andy Carlow, or whoever. So that was in 16.
Okay, thank you.
That was the first hearing.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
And it's probably been, I don't know, three or four public site visits as well.
Okay. I just saw, can you clarify?
Yeah, no, I mean...
Eric, that's a burning?
Yes.
Same thing for you?
I don't remember saying that, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, this is a hypothetical question. But for a septic system and house being within a town trail, would you grant me temporary access to put log, to get onto our woodlot? But for the septic and the house, would you grant me temporary access through the trail?
There's a process for that.
I would have to look at everything, view everything.
Okay. But it is possible?
I would say anything is possible, but probability of it, I don't know.
You, of course, know the process.
I just want, and then with all due respect, I have one last question, if that's okay. Has the town of Moretown been compensated for the Blodgets taking of a land that is a town-owned property?
We're not town-owned.
Guys, we don't need that comment.
Yeah.
Hey, you guys, really, we haven't compensated, but we haven't had anything taken from us, so...
Okay, so I can go up there. I can go up, well, they are using the land to their benefit. Is that a taking?
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, no, I'm just saying, I, I, what I'm saying is...
A little bit of a larger cut there.
No, it's not. I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying to clarify.
Well, I didn't hear what you said.
Travis, really, Cal, I mean, he's just trying to hear what's...
Cal, I'm just trying to clarify some things. No, I'm not, 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 I say with all due respect.
No, I know.
It's, I'm just asking if you made any compensation to the town by putting a septic system in a corner? I just, I...
Let me, can I answer that to you, Tom?
Sure.
For the select board? I did not put that system in. It was grandfathered. The house that was there was over 100 years old. The garage that was there was over 100 years old. I did not, I had to build that garage to the exact same footprint. You guys have the paperwork from that, from Florence Turner. The house, they gave me permission to move the house where it was. Otherwise, nothing could go through there anyways. The cellar hole is still there. The septic system was put in by somebody for the people that owned it before my dad bought that house. So, I mean, I didn't do it and I didn't take nothing from the town. Matter of fact, when you get, when you, when you get a mortgage, your insurance or when you get a D only goes back 40 years. This is one of the only states that it only goes back 40 years. So when you done title searches to find out if there was anything ever there, 40 years, you don't find out nothing. Even if you went back 80 years, you wouldn't have found out the town had a road there, if it did. Because I know, like I said, I know somebody that was born on a Wash Bowl road, Devil's Wash Bowl road, that's 90 some odd years old. He said, no.
All right. Travis, did you have...
I just have a brief comment. I consider this a deliberate torch to my family. From this town and this select board. It's been malicious to my family for the past 18 years that I can remember. It's been malicious to me. It's been negligent of this select board to file the correct paperwork that they've already signed according to VSA Title 19305, Section 305, subsection. This is a deliberate torch to my family and in 2010, I told you, Tom, don't ever come on my land again. And he walks into my house, on and out, walks right into it.
All right, Travis, you're out of line.
Just speaking my piece, just speaking my piece.
Just forget it.
Again, this, today's meeting, because we've already had this site visit already. We've already done this site visit today. It's already been done. So it's just a deliberate torch.
Paul, do you have any questions, Paul?
Uh, no, I do not.
Any other testimony to this relocation?
Tom, can I, we walked, as you know, as you said, I appreciate you saying that. We walked that five or six times. Some people that wanted to be here can't be here because their kid is pretty sick, I guess. And he's in Boston. They wanted to be here because they felt it too with you and I and everybody. That during their first court hearing, the judge ordered mediation. And the mediator that they appointed stated that there's no way that you can take his house. So they, Paul, Paul wrote the terms with, who was it? None of you.
Yeah.
Was it you?
Yes.
They wrote the terms. They went upstairs and they wrote the terms and they came back down again. And they agreed to, we agreed to everything. And then it went on and went on and went on and went on.
Paul, I'd just like to say you've done a fair, showed a fair history here tonight of what's...
As you said with, as you said with trails, it's, it's just a way, you know, to ride a horse, maybe bike or walk. It doesn't have to be upgraded by the town into a road. If they want to put it into a road, they have the right. I can't stop them.
Thank you, Cal, we, we, we appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I know you got a...
That's all right. So at this point, I'm going to close the hearing on the Trail 17 access relocation. I thank everyone for your participation. There's statute, I believe, we have, what's it, 60 days, Paul?
60.
60 days and we will get out our decision. Thank you.
What was the paperwork that was already signed?
I don't know what he's talking about.
You got it, right here? This is already signed, given to everyone, given to the bank and everything.
All right.
You know, that's what I was saying. This was going to be back and...
I know.
Okay, I'm sorry, I know you got another, you guys want to get one tonight too.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Again, within 60 days, there will be a written decision.
Thank you. Cal, are you, in a public commentary, would you want to take up your signage?
Yeah. All right. We have to close. I, uh, I can move to close the hearing. I'll bear what I...
Thanks.
All right, you guys.
I appreciate it.
During public comment, which is the next piece, you can bring up your signage. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I didn't know.
All right, so we are going to go ahead and move on to public comments. Not of Trail 17. However, I guess someone has something really needed to say, go ahead. So why don't we, anyone for general public comment?
Excuse me just a second. You want to give Paul some questions?
Oh, yeah. Hey, Paul.
Any public comment, Paul?
All right, I'll talk to you soon.
That's what I told you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, so now we'll move on to public comments. Cal, Jason brought up something when we were walking. You wanted a sign for driveway or something like that?
Right, it's on here.
Yeah, it's on here.
Section 305.
We had that paper.
The sign stipulations.
This was all, this was all something.
On, on, oh, yeah, 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 no, 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 on, that's right, on...
See, and everything, that's what I did, with signs.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's, when you go around the corner, when he's, when he's trying to get out of the driveway, getting in the driveway, there's a lot of traffic going by really fast.
Yeah, because I have to back in here with my trailer.
Yes.
And I put on my four-way, it was way up the road. The car is still there. I don't mind cars going fast, because the speed limit on that road used to be 50 before.
So, but driveway, was that what it was?
No, blind driveway.
I understand, blind driveway.
Yeah, blind, yeah, because of state law and supply, I think, to town. Because I, the other day, I backed in, no cars were behind me. They've been coming down around that corner. I'm, I'm a pretty good judge of speed because I saw race. At 50, 55 miles an hour on the wrong side of the road. I mean, you've got to do something to it.
I don't know the policy, Cheryl, was that a statement? Did they, uh, sign for that or is that something that...
We'll get a sign.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, both sides. And I'm going to start taking notes. Like I said, I don't mind if somebody wants to drive shit. When you're walking and stuff, go slow by them. I, I do it all the time in my truck, you know? It's just that somebody, I almost got hit the other day. That car, he never, couldn't even slow down and he whips it around and quick. I don't know how he made it, but he made it. And my four-way is on and I'm backing into my yard. Because tractor-trail is turning around here.
We're going to move on.
I know, you've got to get on.
Sorry, but that's just the way we're going to go.
Sorry, I...
All right, I know we have the library and historical society coming in, but...
They canceled.
Oh, they didn't, good.
They canceled?
Yes. Jamie Wimble stopped.
Oh, we, you got kids.
Jamie Wimble stopped around 5:30 and said that you're not ready to come in, so take a long...
They may not be, and I think that it's probably...
Oh, no. I thought the last hour was tough.
So the library's not coming in.
The library didn't stop. Well, I'll say he didn't see if he needed to go back there, not going to go.
Well, it's nice to see you out anyway, so they haven't seen you.
I've been laid up. I'm just getting...
All right. So I, I got your text and I'm sorry, I actually sent something back, it didn't go. So I want you guys to come forward.
Think it's safe to?
I think so.
Probably feel more comfortable back there.
It's not, you'll borrow my cane.
Watch my cat.
All the way up, come on. No, 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 no. Like our friends, come on.
No, no, you guys, I don't want to get hit with that. So we're just here to say, we're going to pardon tomorrow night. I'm not pardoned from this, that you guys are feeling about our party.
And can you tell everyone why?
It's a hearing on the proposed subdivision regulations that we hope to have voted in November. There's some discussion about whether November is the proper time to do this, but we think it's probably as good as any. We'd like to have this as a discussion, not just amongst the plan commission and whoever shows up, the family that shows up. We also have you guys involved because the next step after whatever we do tomorrow night is to then pass this on to you and that you have to hold a hearing. And then after you decide what to do, after your hearing, you then may or may not warn them for the vote.
So I guess the first question is, how was it coming?
Well, we, so, last year there was a bit of debacle with respect to timing and versions and everything, and we've been very careful to...
Because drafts were not dated, so everybody was like a different version.
Yeah, so we have dated drafts now. We've gone over the subdivision regs pretty carefully. We're, we're looking at just the subdivision regulations now, not some other proposals that have been floated earlier. We want, we think these are the most important things to...
We would also add a...
Certificate of Occupancy.
Certificate of Occupancy, we're looking at, was that one?
The, um...
All this stuff.
Savage yards. That was the other proposal that was floating and stuff. But all we want to, what we want to take up is, at this point, are the subdivision regulations.
And you said you're getting pushed back a little bit too?
Well, certainly, other than town officials telling me that some people think it's wrong to do these town-based elections in November because that's not a town that's a slightly nationalized or something. My take on it is, who cares? The people that come to the vote...
I was going to say, don't we typically get a larger turnout during elections?
Yeah, I think that we'd be interested in the larger, I mean, from my part, the more people would vote on things, the better off you are.
It would be nice if the electorate was informed. What bothers me about a lot of this stuff is that people don't know about any of this till they look at the ballot and go, oh, you don't get it. Oh.
The problem is no one reads stuff. So you were here earlier and these people that were testifying got certified letters, okay? For the last, how many years, and Cheryl has a stat from there? This is the first time we've heard about this. This is what we had, or April 17th or something. People don't pay attention, they don't... You know, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, if you can send someone a certified letter stating this such and such is changing, and they ignore it, what are we going to do to get people to...
You're right, I mean, you can drag in the water, but you can't remove the whistle.
Right. I am, so I think, and I agree with you guys, I like the idea of the November election, because typically you get more people out. But can you get them more informed, so they're just not going in checking a box?
So if there's an urgency to this, that's the urgency, is the, because if there's the warnings, the act of, you know, so we've warned ours. This is over, we pass it to you, you guys need to get on with a warning, have your hearing, so that we can then warn for the vote. And according to Cheryl Lynn, it has to be, I think it's August the 7th, because they print the ballots or something.
And we would like to, you know, really work on getting the word out. I mean, I know that people don't pay attention, if they're not inclined to pay attention, but we can do more than just host the public hearing. You know, we can put information on the front porch and in the papers, and we'd like to do that.
So I think, so, yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I think we, um, some night, we have a, and I'm going to laugh here, but we have a party at the town hall. And we have either pizza or something, or just like we cook something, or whatever. Yeah. But maybe that, I mean, because food, I mean, people show up for food. I mean, I go to meetings all the time, and the only reason people come is because I bring a lot of food. Often, and so maybe that's what it is, is to turn it into something to get people out to hear.
The planning commission is tough, I mean, you guys draw a crowd just because of the stuff that goes on here, plus you got... So people are looking at it around here.
Yeah.
We get pride with our guests to give you a problem.
So, um, we've also bought cookies in the past, but we actually, what was your event that you, that you just had?
Oh, Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo, we had, we put out surveys that day, and we didn't really get wind of it until fairly late. Not because of you not putting information out, but because of us not reading it. So, but we did get a fair bit of interest at our last-minute table down there at Cinco de Mayo, it was pretty, it was good.
What's everyone else doing? I mean, I just want to go ahead with this, but try to promote it right, and just move on. I mean, we waited a year.
I'm not sure what you're saying, what are you saying?
I think we should do it in November, but maybe put something different promotional...
The problem is, we don't have time for parties. We've got, we've got a lot of things that we want for tomorrow night.
Right.
And we'll hand this to you. You can have a party if you want it to.
Well, that's it, but that's where you're going to help.
It would be after hours to promote it. You want to make it close to.
Like any information.
Right.
Yes, yes.
You don't want to make it like two weeks prior, not once prior to it, more than two weeks.
After the hearing, it's been warned for the vote, now it's like, here's why we want you to do it.
Right.
So I was also involved when Jonathan came in, and I said, what, you want to vote? Don't you remember this liquid tax collector thing, where the room was full of people saying, you know, why didn't you have the vote now instead of a town meeting? Nobody pays attention.
No one goes to town meeting either.
So that was kind of like me that said, no, you...
If we got rid of Australian ballot, we could have a real town meeting.
Same thing you said.
Did I hear that?
We were, a gazillion times. And I, and I see your point.
Paul's still on the phone here.
And I see Cheryl's point, and the idea that, you know, I think we should just go for it. I mean, the people who are most affected by the subdivisions, have they been participating at all?
Well, there haven't been a lot of sizable subdivisions in the...
But there's like 1,000 acres all of a sudden for sale.
3,000.
3,000 acres, all in Moretown?
Yeah.
The 776 piece, there's 108 acres on the other side of the road, plus, where's the rest of those?
It's on, well, it goes all the way, I actually have a map from the land office, it does, that's definitely, that's what's for sale.
Do the sellers have any interest in this, to maintain the value of the property?
Well, we don't, we haven't actually spoken to the sellers.
I talked to the guy, one of the guy about the, and he's just, all he was, he's like a listing agent, he works for Fountains.
For example?
He just basically said, I said, I was asking about the 108-acre piece, because it abuts my property. And I just said, what's the story? And he goes, well, look on the website, and if you get questions, call me, but you're just looking to unload this thing. So, I mean, they're not going to be subdividing, they're just looking to sell, so this doesn't affect them.
It affects the next part.
Oh, it'll affect the person that chooses to buy it, unless they want to turn it into like just a huge estate, which, in the case of 108 acres, maybe, in the case of 776 acres, not likely, not for a million and three, unless another beer bar decides to move it down. The other part of it is, this is all covered by Act 250. If they want to get into like a 25-lot subdivision or whatever, so, I mean, it's not like we're...
Right.
Hanging out, you know, treasures down here. But at the same time, we should just get something in place, and it's a good conversation to have, people should be thinking about this. More towns change, you know, for a long time, it changed a little bit, there's a house regrowing here and there. And like the last 20 years, it's amazing how much has gone on here, and this whole central mountain area has really been...
You know, it's going to continue, I think, I mean, it's, you saw it, personally, we were in college, it was Richmond, Richmond.
Yeah, Richmond.
You know, and now it's cut up here, so, with those better communities and...
So, we would like this to be a, more than just us on the planning commission, because we're really sick of us. So we would like other people to come in, so we can have a conversation with other people.
So tomorrow night, is anyone available? I am flying out in the morning, so I'm signing out.
I went to the last one with Carl. Oh, Carl.
It was Carl, you, and John Riley. So that was a big turnout for us. The Carl shares, just, you know, many gets wind of this.
Yeah.
What time is it?
6:30.
It's 6:30. You're at the town hall.
Right here.
Right here.
We weren't so full of ourselves that we thought we were going to use the town hall. But, you know, we're going to go over it, and I think there's a broad discuss, you know, we can just pass this along tomorrow night as warned, and then you guys, from what you hear tomorrow night, can make your changes before you warn your hearing. Which would be a way to go, if this thing doesn't evolve, it just gets bad.
Right, so it'd be good if the three of us and Cal and John Roy.
But at least you know about it, and you know that we're interested in working with you upon getting word out before the election.
All right, so you'll get it tomorrow night, whatever you hear, the idea, pass it to us. Hopefully, John will be there, we can talk, and then you can have a hearing, and...
I mean, I'm not quite clear on this, so we can prove it with minor changes, and, or can we approve it with...
You'll have your hearing tomorrow night.
Right.
And that we can handle it with comments. Insignificant changes.
But if there's things that we think should happen, but we don't want to slow the process, we can approve it as warned, and then hand it with comments saying, you guys might want to change this or that, or want to think about it.
If there've been significant changes, if they're significant, then the whole thing has to go, start over.
But we've, but we've been through this once, actually, for better or worse, so I don't really think there'll be significant changes.
Although, how many people showed up the first time? They weren't all there for us, were they? I think it was on a guy from Bridge, but, Bridge, guy from A18, and, and I forget, sorry, but, did he tell us it was 2019?
He did, originally, yeah.
Yeah, and now it's 2020.
Yeah.
The bridge in Middlebury that they finally did on their own was first proposed in 1955.
Darren, don't tell us that.
Well, the good news is, they are starting in 2019, but it's around the cemetery they're building up the rocks, so...
Then together, yes.
The bridge itself will be 2020.
Of course, that's the schedule before they had fired a new building.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All the friends are there.
All right, so...
We're not going to take up your, all your time.
Is this the correct, the, on the website now?
Yes. And the date is by 15, maybe 15.
I think it's right at the top, the right-hand side.
Yeah, so we just want to make that reservation before, while we had... We had three different copies, all sorts of...
So we, not, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, a guy who was doing all that, wasn't dating, and we pressed it, every change one word, dated.
Dated.
Absolutely. So we're all going to be on the same page in the next three years. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming, nice to come, nice to see you. Hey, ladies. Yeah, why not? Roll on. So we had, the library commissioners have postponed, but we're happy to see you ladies.
I'm going to hold this, because it's gold. So you don't want to go just like... I'll come get you sometime, you'll never have to take you again.
Oh, well, you should have been, next thing I know, I was in a wheelchair. I had a fall.
Hey, stop pushing around. Yeah, we do have races at the end of the meetings, so... So, yeah, I just all, I know these signs and...
I'm writing out my nickname.
You wouldn't do that.
He missed the snacks, huh?
No, no, still some there.
Sorry, no warning.
Yeah. Actually, Kilo would be a word for it.
I did bring a warning, sorry.
All right, so you ladies here from the Historical Society, and we were talking about the library relocation, and I wanted to make sure you guys were involved in the process. And something that was discussed here, I think Tom Boudowski originally threw out an idea, the idea of December, we talked to, oh, the library commission at that point, just to see if there was any interest. This building doesn't get used that often, and as it's gotten a little bit more talk, we wanted to get you guys, because you're, obviously, you're up in the library at the current one, you know about the history of the town and such, and have some opinions on this. So we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for everyone to have a say.
Well, we, I've met, and Elliot, I think has met a couple of times with the library director, and from those meetings, we got the sense that they are moving to the town hall. It's a definite move.
But they, they say it is a definite move, I, my way, it's not them.
All right, so what's going on, it's a process, and it'll eventually be voted on, is what will happen.
It's going to go to the town?
It'll go to, it'll go to a townwide vote.
That's the first thing on the list.
Yeah.
But prior to that, and we don't want to rush it, our original date we were looking at is next town meeting, is when we were hoping to have a vote, if we decided, if everyone decided we wanted to do that. There's quite a bit of the legwork that's going on, the library commission is looking at several things from, what it would look like, how it would work, costs, and such.
There's your money.
So there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to it, it's not done deal one way or another. The reason behind is, we're really, you know, we did an evaluation of the properties in town. Some of it, we own some land, we own our, just our buildings, and one of the things that we have to recognize is, is the town hall is underutilized. We use it for town meeting, and then there's a few weddings and such, but not a lot of events. It's a great building, I want to keep it, personally, I want to keep it great and put money into it. But unless we can show some use in...
I don't think they interrupt, you said put money into it? Whose idea was to paint that?
I think...
Why, yeah, why I ask is, I never heard of painting the building without washing it down first. The guy who's painting is painting right over there.
It wasn't pressure washed.
No.
I thought it was, it was pressure washed.
It was pressure washed just before he painted it.
Well, I never saw anybody who ever pressure washed it.
I was there a couple of times.
Because I thought to myself, mister, you wait another year down the road, that paint's going to be off of there.
So, it was, I think the board, we recognized that we need to be painted.
Oh, that's nice.
And in the contract, it stated what was supposed to be done, whether it's been followed or not, I mean, but that's...
Because I never saw.
So anyways, we wanted to see that building utilized to its full potential. And in the last year or so, we've done a, really, a poor job of trying to promote. I mean, we've talked about it at different times, it just, for whatever reason, does not, doesn't get used. So we thought that perhaps if the library is there, it's more of a, more of a community center than a library. Yes, library use, but libraries nowadays are more than just books and more, you know? You know, there's more things that go on, and we're looking at more of a utilizing that as a town center, as it was I envision. You have the downstairs, you have a great kitchen, you know, that's where maybe a senior can meet and things like that. It's to really utilize that building, it's not to make it exclusive of everyone and just a library. It's more to be inclusive to everyone to use the building, but to get some use out of it. And by putting something like that in there that's using it all the time, they have a lot of good programs. I mean, I'm very impressed, I don't know if you go to the library much, or use any of their programs they do, but they're doing a lot. And we just, personally, I think it's a good facility here, but again, we're open to, you know, it's really, we're in the phase of, what's everyone think? And if everyone in town is, is the oral idea, probably nothing we would do.
Well, it came up at one of our meetings, you know, have, has it tried, have you tried to promote the, and feel yourself, that, you know, letting people know that this is available and...
Yeah, I think we've done a poor job of it, we put it on front-page form a little bit, front porch form. I do it every starting time, and then John whispers to the right, click one. I hope it's not a bad thing that I'm saying. It's not back things, I know. But Katrina did recently come up with a possible new piece for that, so that, we've, yeah, but poorly, we have not done a good job of that.
And, well, I'm concerned that, once the library goes in there, I mean, they have told us that they would have racks on wheels that they could move up against the wall, if there was going to be an event at the... But I, I wonder how long that will go on.
And who cleans it up, you know, and takes, makes sure that it's restored to a library again, after somebody uses it? You know, this could be very, become a problem. While if it's just there like it is now, and people go in, you know that they're responsible for taking their mess out. But when you're returning a room, especially a library, to the way it was before, it's difficult. I know when I was rehearsing with Mad River Corral, we went into some other places when Harvard was closed. And we took a picture of it, and then we made sure that everybody's stands were in the same place, and everything was set up exactly the way it was, and that took another 20 minutes at the end or so to get it that way. How many people are going to do that and take care of it that way? I doubt if anybody is.
Yeah, I, those are good questions, and those are the type of questions that, and we're recording those, that we will talk into the library. That, those are good discussion points. So what type of racks are there available? You know, are there ones that are permanent on the walls that close up? There's, there's a lot of different storage systems that are available, and quite frankly, how many do we need now? Because most of the books come from the state library anyways, and they're loans. So I, I should, they've talked about, they don't need the capacity, it's not like you need huge libraries anymore, because it's in and out, and a lot of stuff is electronic.
Well, you were talking about the things for books, all I could picture was the type of vault hat. Well, I know where they are today, and if they had those in that poor town parks, town hall, they're going to have a mess, because they're heavy, even if they... town hall, they're gonna have a mess, because they're heavy, even if they were old, they're big. And I don't, I can't picture them stored there anywhere, like the size that was in the vault here.
Have you ever seen when schools do book fairs?
No, never been.
So they have, like, little, they have portable things that literally, they look like metal boxes when they go in the truck. When you put them on, they fold all open and they can expand. I think it's more something simpler like that they would think of.
But they'd be doing it for a whole library, not just a book fair. And it would be a lot more complicated and a lot heavier and a lot more work. I personally would hate to see the town hall closed up and become just a library that cannot be used for other things. And that's what I'm afraid is gonna happen.
I think that's something that we were very clear about when we were talking about the scope of this project. Is this was only an interesting idea to go investigate, and we wanted to retain town halls as a multiple-use facility. And that was a requirement to doing this. And now we're waiting to see if they come up with a clever way to do that or not. So if there is a way to meet all the needs that we want, that we want for the use of that as a town hall, community-centered library, great. And if not, if there isn't a good solution to that, then that's as far as it goes. This is right now at the point of investigation.
Because we don't have a list to go and move either.
So your questions, well, let's go ahead and leave your questions to me, because you've got great questions, and those are the questions that we need to...
Some of the ones we're coming up, doubles bouncing off of there.
Okay, yeah.
There's just some questions, some comments that we came up with last...
Sure.
And one of them, the first one was, would it go to a vote of the people?
Yeah, we got that.
And the library building is on the state of the Montessori Buildings Registry. So I don't know if they were, the trustees were saying that they wanted to sell that when they found out who owned it. I don't know if they found out.
They said they owned it.
They do, alright.
The trustees.
Yes, okay. Okay, I knew they were investigating that at the time that we met. And I don't know how that would go if they sold that. And I don't know what, who would want that building.
Yeah.
There's nothing to go with it. There's no land, there's no water, there's no nothing. We'd money for a dollar. Because we only need once a month. We don't worry about the heat, we don't worry about the lights, we don't need a bathroom. I can go to Roger Spouse's.
Across the street from my house.
So that was one. Other point was that it is a state disarted building, or on the state disart registry. And then there was the cost of utilities at the town hall. Those would certainly go up due to the larger space and the more in-use time.
Yeah, well, I think, again, you would have less use of, you know, that's not gonna be significant. If you use it more, it's gonna be cost of more, obviously.
Right, right.
But we hope it's used more. I mean, the idea is, is to use this.
Yeah, but you want it to be used more, honey, with a little income coming in too. The power, the power of the heat.
No, income is good. In terms of the Historical Society, the residents.
I'd say so.
You won't get any town meeting lunch.
Damn, you're a real hard n***.
It's not I was saying.
You have very strong and good hair.
Okay, and then there was, will there be a lease or rental agreement, or?
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good question.
You know, keep, keep in mind that we're still in the...
There you are. But these are, but these are good questions.
The field is overstated.
Okay, well, that's...
These are the questions that we need.
I know.
It's not the impression that we've got.
Right.
Because they, were you there when they said the U-hauls aren't coming next week, but they will be coming soon?
They are, they are really convinced that it's going very, very soon. And it kind of was a little uncomfortable feeling.
We can assure you that it's not anytime soon.
Okay. And don't get me wrong, I, I know they need more space. With all the programs they're doing and everything, and the kids' programs. They need a bath. I understand that fully. But I just don't think the town hall is the right solution.
My feelings are, for their programs, all their other activities that they do besides just doing books, that could still be done at the town hall. But they could still, so they would just have like the two buildings going, because you're not gonna close, throw out a historical building with us on the second floor. I hope.
Never do that.
And, and that wouldn't be as expensive. I mean, of having that heat, the electric and everything in the town hall when there's nothing going on down there except books going out.
Yep.
That's definitely a possible model. But, you know, if you get to increase use of the town hall by having more programs there, that's another possible good way to go.
And I like the idea that they're doing programs, and I like the ways that they're running the library. I was librarian before I moved here and before I taught. But I was librarian for a few years. And I like libraries, but at the same time, you can get, as a town member, and you know, there's a different way of looking at it too. And as for usage, they keep statistics of children's books and adult circulation. You're aware of all that. And if the children's circulation is real high and the, and the adult circulation is minimal, it makes no sense to move the library down there, but rather to the, you know, places in the school that aren't being used for the children's part of it.
I have to say, everyone's getting thrown things at. The old part of the elementary school, we had so much love with that old library. But I'm told, before I was here, that was tried and went down in flames. I don't know why.
That's the last thing on my list too.
Alright, so let's...
Okay, what do you want? What will happen to the Historical Society collection, which we currently have upstairs? And we have a few things downstairs. That's one of our concerns. If they do move to the town hall, what will happen to the Historical Society items now at the town hall? The quilts, the photos, the window blinds, stage curtains, post office?
We just don't have them restored.
Yeah, the curtains are beautiful. I, the idea, again, when we're throwing things out or when we were thinking about this whole thing, is to have you guys involved down there. Is it not to be, this place is not to be exclusive of the Historical Society. I mean, you're a part of it, and it should be a part of it. And when I say a town center, that's, the vision is you guys being there as well. It's not to cut you out of anything. In fact, it's to put you more in to the circulation, if you will, or in, into the public eye. You guys have a great little collection of things up there. I've been up there, actually when Lisa was the library, she took me upstairs to show me your, your stuff up there. The li, the, the post office that you have down there is a beauty. So it's no way to try to cut anything or anyone out. It's to try, so part of the meaning to get you here is, what would work for you down there? You know, and so maybe start thinking in those terms. Not so much that you're being cut out of anything or not being thought of. It's, you know, what would Historical Society think? What could they bring to this, you know, city, I don't know if it's called a city center, but town center? You know, what, because that, you're, and that's why we looked for your input. How do we, how should we paint it, or what colors should we paint? You're involved, we want you, you know, if it is something that we do that you're not, we're not taking yourself out or leaving you, you know, somewhere else, we want you to be a part of it.
But we're also concerned about space.
No, and I think that...
The libraries down there, I mean, we have a full floor upstairs of stuff.
Yeah. Well, again, it may, or as Jason said, this is, we're trying to figure that out. You know, would it work? And again, your input, would you like to be in there? Would you like to participate in that? Those are the type of things to bring back to your, your commission and talk about. And, but really, what I want you to get out of this is that you're, we want you involved. We want you to have a voice at the table here.
We want to be involved.
Yeah, and hopefully, it's a, we, we're looking for a win-win for everyone. We're not trying to exclude anybody. We just want, you know, I just look at that, or we do, is how can we make it more viable? So it's not to try to cut anyone out or exclude anyone. Let's get everyone at the table, and if it's having two spots, so be it or leave it at the way it is, it's fine too. We're just, you know, if we don't look at things and talk about it and throw things around, you know, the same will be the same forever. And which, we don't always need change, I understand that. But I think we need to talk about it and find out what is best for the town.
Yeah, well, we certainly want to be involved in the back and forth.
Yeah. And I think maybe early on, we, we did not reach out early enough to you guys, I would say, you know.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say.
No, it did not, it did not. But it was, sometimes when you don't realize it, you know, and a lot of you feel the way you do. But it's, it's a loose conversation, hey, what do you think about this? But we should have, you know...
I heard it was all your idea.
Well, one, one thing that we talked about that's not on this list, and when we were having one of the meetings was, there really should be somebody that works for the town that is assigned to make, to publicize things, to actually do that job. Because if you're trying, if you have another job that you're doing, that you have to do, and that job's gonna take priority. But if there's somebody committed to it, I know, I used to be active in the Bundy Center for the Arts and the Mad River Corral and all that. And for a long time, I was on the Bundy Board. And we had people that we would hire that were in charge of just fundraising, in that case, you know. Not trying to get activities. We had plenty of activities, but we didn't have the money for it. And they were people that were good at it. And if they did their job, they, you know, they got a commission, just like a tax and a collector does. And there'd be a way that salary or whatever you do, however you do that, would be on whether they actually do a good job and...
And are you proposing that for promoting the...
Yes, for promoting it and booking and all, you know, everything connected with money coming into it, yes. And then you don't have to think of closing other buildings and just putting everybody into the town hall. I personally would hate to see it become a closed building. I mean, now, there are so many things that could be done in there if somebody is doing something about it.
You're gonna put it in on something besides computers or front porch or Facebook, whatever you like.
Well, these, these people that do that are phone call people. They're able to call, do a lot of things. There are a lot of them around in this area too.
Now, what, what brought up the fact that Warren turned their pretty much town hall over to their library? I don't know if you...
Yeah, I know that.
We've heard that.
But I also heard that it's not just the library, and that they also are on portable carts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I also heard that they had a third floor.
They do, they have a whole other floor for meetings.
For meetings and activities and things like that.
Okay, so it's not really a good comparison.
No, it's not really.
Do you have a copy of those? I noticed you had a couple actually. I know Katrina's been taking notes, but...
Do you have one that's got, well, that was a week kind of...
So is there any other question or concerns that you ladies have tonight?
Well, I just wanted to bring up, what is the current status of the closing of some of the Valley schools? The War Down Slade, that's one of those schools that are closed. And I agree with Jason 100%. I think that that old original part of the school building would make the perfect library, perfect location for a library.
Except it's being used as classrooms.
Yeah, but it's...
The upstairs, the upstairs.
Yeah, I say it's not gonna be forever.
There, well, that could be, but for now, the enrollment actually is increasing. So they have 45, 45 preschool children that are gonna be attending next year.
I had to make that your classes, my son's preschool. There's three preschool classes.
There's no way that any school in the valley can be expanded to accommodate what more town has here.
They shouldn't. Get rid of it anyways.
That's true.
What about cafeteria? The old one?
The one downstairs?
The old, old downstairs.
Cafeteria, yes.
No, that's, that is not being used as classrooms.
No.
But, but I also just wanted to say, I mean, you know me well enough that I've always fought to keep this village as is, and that everything should be here. And I love that town hall. And I was here back in 1985, and we agreed that, and everything else. And Ray and I agreed that you should be involved in picking out the paint color, because, you know, I said basically, well, go back and see what they did in 1985. We'll do the same thing.
And the only other thing that I had, which is already not, well, it is permanent, but what is the black metal situation at the town hall? Is that, we have this, we're laid off to the...
Nothing on your stuff, Chris. Nothing in that corner.
I just wondered how extensive it was.
Pretty contained to the kitchen.
Okay.
In that corner by the refrigerator that's...
Oh, they get some water.
Which we've hopefully corrected by now.
As the women that run the flower beds not visiting so low.
You go tell them that.
I will, I will.
Yes.
I told them they couldn't cut some magnolia tree down. I can tell them that.
So we appreciate you coming in, appreciate your input. As, we'll speak to the trustees there, we'll be coming in as well. And we'll continue to have dialogue. And, you know, I'm interested to see what they've come up with. They have some things that they're gonna bring to us as, you know, pulling their ideas and such. So we know as much as we do at some point.
And we have another, some of the times we've been there too.
Absolutely, that's, when we get that, we'll invite you when we have them in. So we're here as all peers. No, 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 so you'll be here, and then, so if you have questions, we can all sit down and take care of them then, rather than reading at the Val report or see yourselves on TV.
Yes, no, we would appreciate being invited to the meeting.
Thank you for listening to us.
Yes, well, thank you for taking the time.
Everyone's welcome. You have more thoughts, keep them up.
Yeah, in the meantime, if you do, if there's things, oftentimes we may walk out and say, oh, we should have said that. Just call Cheryl or email Cheryl, or however you'd best like to communicate with her, or Katrina, and they will pass it on to us. Or through Ray, I guess.
I watched it 15 years ago.
Alright ladies, one more side track.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Denise.
It's a long time ago.
The boys tell me I worked here, I said, no, I did not, I don't even know who's serious. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope you feel better.
Oh, I'm getting there. Taking me all sit on, I'm getting there.
Well, getting results good.
Jason, you want to... Cheryl? Alright, county administrator, Jay, great, you got it. Just wait for Ray for a moment. So you just started working for the Val report?
Uh, yeah, I graduated from Plymouth State University on May 19th, and I started working on Twinters.
Wow. Only two days?
Yep.
All right. Congratulations.
Thanks.
So are you, have you attended many select board meetings in the valley, or?
Um, this is my first Moretown one. I'm supposed to go to the face in one tomorrow night, and then I went to the Harwood Select Board, and that was riveting.
Oh, the Harwood Select Board, cool. Yeah, I bet that would be interesting. Yeah, Chris used to come a little bit, and Lisa, but I haven't seen Lisa for a long time, although she calls me so well.
I will say, did you see that situation rather than the first hour?
Yeah, you never know what's going to come up with these meetings, that's for sure.
So Phil, you listened to me now. Let me go back here. He said, first, I'm terribly sorry not to have made it tonight, had it done for tomorrow night. I thought Tom handled it very, the situation very well. Cheryl, I couldn't make out names. If you could send me the list of those who spoke and their associates. A list of who spoke, I'll get a draft decision out tomorrow. So then you can discuss it at your next meeting. And then at that time, you're probably revising it.
Revising.
Or approved or denied.
Are you ready? Thank you. Anything with your county administrator report?
Lupper's Lane. So I submitted a TA 65, which is the reimbursement for what we've already spent. The grant was $65,000, so we've already spent $34,000. So you have bids here later on. I submitted for $34,953. The projected cost, total cost of the whole thing was $73,095. We got the grant for $65,076, which is 90%. So the grant balance, bottom line, the grant balance that we have to spend is $30,833.
So that's what these things are going to be less than.
Martin estimated, when we did the grant, Martin estimated the rest of the project as $19,258 to finish.
So if you can close with this estimate, we should be okay.
Yeah.
Well, depends on what the other people think of Martin's.
We have 10% match anyway, even if it comes in lower.
Yes, but it won't come in lower. I can't see it coming in lower than that. Because that's, we still have to buy gardeners, too.
I think 30%, $30,000, done. All right, so that's good. And we'll open those up after new visits later on.
Um, you remember the accident in Metalsex? Where there was a gas spill in the fire room?
Yes, yep. Everyone else, yes.
So, um, I contacted our insurance company, and they wouldn't pay for the claim. It was $24,000, $24,000 in uniforms. So then I went to the company, the insurance company of the, of the truckers.
DNC Transportation.
And they gave us a check for the cost of the new uniforms. The in-between my doing that and Steve ordering the uniforms, he's changed tactics on me. And the uniforms that he ordered were new Tech Gen 71, which are a different fabric. I couldn't ask the insurance company to pay for upgrading our uniforms. So the bottom line, we are $2,469.91. And there is nothing in the fire station budget left to cover these uniforms. So I approached Steve as such, and the fire department is supposed to pay the town
Are there, some of their funds they've raised?
Yeah.
Did he understand the sole process and how that worked, and how did this happen?
It's, he should have told me. I mean, and then we could have been prepared for this.
So he knew exactly what type of uniforms he was authorized to purchase?
Yeah, they're canvas. And you've got the new Gen Tech, which is better quality, and $177 each more.
So if they want to upgrade, I think that's fine, but at least you'd be paying the tab, so that's okay?
Now, I could have had a couple of more options. I went directly to him first. Another option would be, I have a grant approved from VLCT, because I saw this coming on, to pay 50% of that. So I don't plan on getting a grant and paying for half of that. This is not coming out of town money, it's coming after fire department money. And they need to be accountable for what they get, is my, is my view. If you want me to change that, I will, but I don't think it's teaching them anything.
No, and we're not looking to teach them anything, but we just want them to understand that if they're going to upgrade, it sounds like he's taking responsibility of it, so I don't have an issue. I, we just need to be more transparent about it.
I shouldn't have said teach. I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to, well, really, I'm trying.
It is, it is, it is.
Finances.
Right. And we called that, but I, you understand, we're just making them responsible for what they're.
We didn't hesitate and said that they had money for it. So I'm just letting you know that you're going to see that expenditure in their expenditures, but when I get the check from him, you'll have an offset. That's all that I have.
When I suggest to Tom that anything like this happens in the future, that, yeah, okay, they're paying for them, but they should have let Cheryl know, so that she didn't have to be stressed out over.
Yeah, she should, I'm going to, I've already, in my notes, I'm going to give Steve Paul just a, and Steve's really good typically, and he's not trying to pull things with us, but sometimes we just got to remind them that this is a process. You know, and it's a proper.
Well, also that there's help available to him to try to buy things as cost-effective as possible. And he may not know all of the sources.
And I have a bill. All he's going to do is just.
Exactly, you were there.
Say, you know, I didn't get the ones, the other ones. He said they weren't available, so he got these other ones. Let me know, you know?
Right.
But it's more, we can help you rather than you're doing it wrong.
Right, exactly, we want to show, absolutely.
Can I just, one more question, going back to Lupper's Lane. So you said the original answer was $75,000 for the, for the whole, whole phase in, right? And in the work league, how we did was, was around $40,000, something thirty, something? So if that's the case, then there should be like $40,000 left. I don't know how to, it looks like we only had $19,000 left to do. I'm not following, where you get the $19,000?
And the grant, so the grant was $65,000.
The grant is 90% of the cost?
Yes, which is $65,000.
Okay, so the grant.
We had a bill before, I believe, that I submitted $34,000, TA for $34,000, which is 90% of Dubois' bill, that was $38,000, something like that.
So I guess it's still 30, I'm just not following the numbers here. So if it's 65 and 34, it's still $31,000.
We've got $30,881 of the grant.
Why don't you hold that until we do the bits?
Yeah.
And once we do the bits, and then we can do that math and go backwards with it? I know exactly what you're thinking, and I just want to get that last number, so we can plug it in.
Sure.
Yeah, that's also why I asked what happened to the grant.
Right. So when we get those numbers, and we can do all that math.
I've got the file waiting right here. Yeah.
And you can, you can get that. So Cheryl, you're all set with the county administrator report?
Yes.
Ray, do you have anything?
Okay, so I looked at the development site, and.
Yeah, no, I have that for our business.
And so she wasn't around, I looked at it, but, and I did talk to Martin about Martin's, and agreed. We can do a little bit of ditching up there to, I think, get rid of the water on our lawn. We don't want to have a whole new ditch coming down out into the field, and that'd be a lot of work. But I think that we can solve the problem in our lawn with minimal work by the town to do that. And Martin said he can do it sometime this summer, and he was going to talk to Deb directly about it.
Perfect. So, you guys, thanks, Ray, for communicating that to Deb, we have discussed, thank you, Katrina. Kelly? Thank you.
So I think this kind of ties into grievance hearings, but when I was getting home, John's aunt stopped me, that her and his grandmother had gotten a letter from the town saying that they had more land than they didn't have, and they had to bring a note into the town, and what did I know about it? And I had to be in by Friday.
So let me stop you right there. So that does go into grievance hearings, so hold that story, because we will be waiting for that.
Perfect.
There's several stories. You might have to get live.
So I'll hold one until later.
All right. Yeah, if you got grievance hearings, anecdotes we can list. Jason, you have a minute?
No, I don't.
Katrina, is that?
Mine's something.
All right. A few things that I have here, other reports and communications. And I, I hope I wasn't hearing this name, but Catherine Friedman, South Hill Road.
That's my neighbor.
All right, was there discussion here on the June 7 meeting?
No, she, she talked to me. That's referring to talking to me.
Okay.
Yes.
So can you?
So I told her to email me, so I had something to give to you guys. I guess several years ago, you guys went up and dug out a ditch slash creek behind her house. Do you remember, anybody remember that?
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's South Hill Road, so right above me, so 1760 something.
Was that up there where George, where George just went?
Yes.
Jason, did George just land there?
Yes, so she said that it had filled back in, and she wanted you or Martin to come look at it. And so I stopped that email, and I had to tell you that.
All right, so at some point, can you get in touch with Martin and just check this out?
Yeah.
I'll give you the email, so you don't forget. And so the next thing, this is from David Russo. He would like to formally request to be considered by the Select Board for reappointment to the Development Review Board. So Dave has been on, I don't know what, three years?
No, no, he's been on for probably eight years now.
Hasn't been that long.
And he's, he's very good.
No, I am.
He's very knowledgeable, he's very polite, and very.
So.
I make a motion that we appoint a reappoint David Russo to the Development Review Board.
I'll second that. Any further discussions?
Just a question, has anyone else applied for the slot? And are there other slots opening?
There are nothing else open now, that's the only thing. And no one else has applied for. I notified, I notified, I sent a notice of the board members, and when their terms expired, to John Riley. So. Who applied for.
Is that something we're supposed to post in anywhere?
For reappointment, if it was a whole new position on there, and you remember who hadn't, who hadn't served on there, and, you know, and. Yes, yeah.
I don't think there's any policy.
For reappointment, yeah, there's really, for reappointment of someone who'd already been on there for that number of years, I don't think it would be worth their while to.
No, I'm just checking to see if there is a process that we're supposed to.
There is not a policy, but, I mean, it's always good habit to, to put out there the, you know, for the members that are. And I sent that to John Riley, so let me use the chair.
He was copying on it.
Yeah.
Questions, any other questions? All in favor of reappointing Dave Russo to the DRB? Well, I, I.
I.
There we go.
I think it was the last term that we put it out there, and all the members came in, and you met the meeting with them and talked with them, and so.
All right, and I guess that's all, I don't have anything addition to that. So old business, we'll come back, and we'll do the invoices and release. Mold bids.
So I asked for three, I got two. And then I put them into this spreadsheet, which is much easier to understand than reading the bids, because they're each like 17 pages long.
So you asked for GW Savage, Pure Clean, and?
Surf Pro, and Surf Pro didn't elect to come visit and give us a bid. So there's some things you see that GW Savage is including in their bid, that Pure Clean is not, and vice versa. And I met with both of these people, GW Savage is a worst-case scenario. He put in to remove the whole kitchen. This is, this is only mold remediation, it's not to rebuild anything either, this is just to remove. Per cleans is the minimum, their only plan to move, remove up to the stoves. So I think if you look at it, GW Savage can't get worse, but Pure Clean's can go up.
What was the actual request?
Can we see out the RFP?
The RFP.
I, I sent them the, the report.
Report from them.
So it was their suggestions, based on their report.
Everyone had the same.
Yeah, based on their KND's air quality report.
This from KND? They were all given them, so these were their specifications that these people suggested be done.
And they specified, they said they thought the whole kitchen needs to be pulled out. When Pure Clean went and looked at it and did his own examination, he didn't feel that that needed to happen. And GW Savage said, well, he would put it in there, and then, of course, if they didn't, the price would come down. I, so he did worst-case scenario.
So, so this looks to me that if I try to equalize the bids? No, it's not that obvious, did you?
No, it's not obvious.
So are you saying that Pure Clean's bid does not comply with KND's recommendations?
Technically, no, it does not. Because they don't feel that it needs to.
Same on Sam Old.
Well, you can't, you can't give them specifications, and if they don't.
This is their recommendations, it's not.
Yeah, but if, I would say if KND recommended that.
Yeah.
That's what the RFP should do.
Yeah.
That's what the RFP was.
Yeah.
But if they hadn't been on it, if they made their own evaluation, they came down and they said, well, I think it's contained to here, I'm not going for it.
Yeah, that's what they said, yeah.
Pure Clean did it on their site visit. GW Savage went by the RFP.
No, GW Savage did a site visit. They both did.
Yes, they did do a site visit, but I mean, GW Savage's bid.
Yes, it's fine. And there's just includes more as well, as you can see in the very first part, they're going to, they, you know, they are going to be, they have to clean.
Yeah, it varies. Do you know why Pure Clean is planning on negative air fan for 10 days, and GW Savage for three?
GW, I spoke to GW Savage, and they said three was the, was the standard.
We asked them.
But Pure Clean, I didn't get an answer as to why. So if you look, if you look at just line by line of the ones that they are, they both have, they're very similar in price.
Going back to Jason's question, my guess is, if you look on the bottom line, GW Savage is going to do a, an air and surface disinfectant.
Which their company owns this system.
Okay.
Which is a foggy thing that will go through the whole building. So if anything's disturbed afterwards. Oh, and the other thing, so the HEPA vacuuming, where it says twice for one price, GW Savage told me, because theirs was double this. So I said, why is yours double what my other bids are? What are you doing extra? And he said it was industry standard to do it first thing, and then once they removed all the damaged materials, to do it again. What are you doing extra? And he said it was industry standard to do it first thing, and then once they removed all the damaged materials, do it again. But he said they would do that at one price. You know, they'd do it twice for the price of one.
Do you have the actual bids handy?
I have, well, yeah.
Just wanted to take, what kind of warranties come in if you like?
A good question.
A warranty? I don't, I didn't see anything on these for warranties, on the bids themselves.
Really?
Because they don't do a warranty, because, I mean, this water came from the foundation. It could happen again. You know, I mean, when you do a cleanup for a fire or something, it would be, you know, no warranty or whatever you could have. I can't see how they would do a warranty.
Does KND come out and inspect their work?
KND comes out afterward and does another air quality, yes.
And GW Savage doesn't have you pay their final bill until that happens yet. Pure Clean did not say that.
I have a little clarification on the 10 days of negative air fan. That is actually five days duration for two machines.
Yeah, I was breaking it down by the date.
And no insurance.
The per day price. No, 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 I'm like...
So this is the last, where are we gonna find this?
It's on us.
I guess we need to spend the money. There's no question that the building needs to be cleaned. I think Savage, it seems like is more, more complete with it.
I got a better feeling from him than the other guy.
This is my idea. I'm paying for this. I don't know how you feel about it, but just in the, just in the Town Hall alone, Joe Gabri is gonna be like $4,000, I'm estimating. We had to have parts to fix the furnace before State of Vermont would inspect the building that was 800. KD was 500, and now 8,600, so to pay it, I would think about if I were you was adding it into the tax rate. When you get to that time and stop and look what the state tax rate is gonna be. The town tax rate, I think, is gonna be okay. It would add a half a penny to the tax rate, but we'll see. But that's an option. Or you have the capital, you have the capital, stake it in the Capital Reserve Fund.
All right, so we have a little time.
We'll see how the tax rate looks. It's certainly a consideration.
Yeah, we don't have a grant list yet, so I can't tell you what it looks like, but...
And of course, I hadn't asked anybody for the cost to put it back together, because we don't know what's coming out yet.
Yeah, but that's, as soon as we know that, so we're gonna wanna hop on that, because that might be something that we throw into the rate as well.
Yes, yeah. So if you approve this, they'll make it be here next week.
Yeah, well, I think we need to approve it.
We need to do it.
Yeah.
So the only question is, do we go with Pure Clean or GW Savage? Based on your recommendations, far as I've got feeling, I'd take that, and it just looks like Savage may even risk a little bit more. I think the last one, the air and surface disinfectant, maybe.
Well, one thing they brought up was cleaning all the dishes. Like, if we went on Pure Clean, how am I supposed to disinfect all those dishes? You know? I was like, oh, good call.
Actually, GW Savage actually takes them off-site and watches the plates. Disinfects them and bring them back when they're done.
I'll make a motion that we hire GW Savage.
Kelly seconds. Any further questions? All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
You want the amount in the quote?
I know.
And you're good, and you're, he wants to put the amount in his...
Yeah, for $8,602.12.
If you want, I can get one of those to send to you.
Thank you, Katrina, for putting it in the...
Oh, no problem.
The cabinets that were there, have they all been moved now?
No, nothing's been touched.
So does that have to be removed before they can do their work?
Yes, that's included in that study. They're actually gonna take the cabinets to their facility.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
And then they will determine, they will let us know if they can be saved before they do anything to them. Because they also will give us a bid for the rebuild.
Yeah, this company's good. My brother's house burned down, and they took all the stuff out.
Yeah.
It was amazing what they did.
I've worked with them before.
So they have a really good job. So we need, with the stuff that they are able to rehabilitate, they do all right with them. All right, approve the minutes from May 21, 2018?
A little business.
Is there any other old business?
Yeah, speaking of the Town Hall, painting looks good so far. What's gonna be done with the cupola? There seems to be a clavicle that's...
I've talked to him about that a couple of times. He had, it was to no fault of us. He had a problem with his lift. He planned to get it at one time, someone else took it, blah, blah, blah. I know the lift is bond now, and that's how he reaches the cupola. So I haven't asked him since then, but I can get an answer for him.
But he doesn't do actual carpentry.
Well, the bid said topboards, and so I sent to him that would be included. I was at the Town Hall with him, and I said that would be included in fixing it. So it's something he had, he said he would have to remove, fix, put back up. Because if he's gonna paint it, he should fix it, so...
It's part of the contract.
Yeah. So I don't know if it'll get done this year, but he does know it's part of his contract.
Okay, all right, because this is the first time I've noticed the actual white clavicle with the hole in it. I hadn't noticed that before, because the slats on the...
Numbers are painted green now.
Yeah, good, okay.
And I will go look at it, because I can tell if it wasn't pressure, but he had the pressure on it.
He did have it. He had it. He went back in his truck. I think he did it.
We talked about, we talked about that and said, oh, that didn't seem to make much difference.
Yeah, and then it was like maybe two weeks before he got to paying more than just one section, so... I did see him with a bucket of bleach water too at one point when he was up on the lift wiping and painting, so...
Well, if it didn't come off, the paint will probably stick through it.
All right, any other old business?
I have, actually, one more thing real quick. I have a new, BLCT finally came up with their own social media policy, which we literally just had to fill in our name. So I just did that today, so I will email it all to you. So it'll be super simple.
Approved by our insurance.
Yeah.
All right, now looking for approval for May 21, 2018.
I'm gonna approve the minutes, 5:21.
Any further discussion? All in favor of aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to new business. Let's go up here. Lovers Lane bids. Why don't we go ahead and make those? And then we have some math. We wanna figure out where the money is.
Okay, Katrina, there's two bids.
Hold on, I translated that paper. Do you want me to grab it now?
No, I've got it.
All right, so we've got two bids. The first one is DuBois Construction.
I just want to be clear that I hadn't, I didn't go to the site meeting, and I wasn't involved in this bid process at all for DuBois.
Thank you, Robert. So we have a bid from DuBois Construction, Mills Ex Vermont, $40,810. Jeff Newton was the person that made this bid. And it says slope stabilization and roadwork, including guardrail as described by Martin Cameron in the site meeting, 5/23/18.
First side of here, I say the guardrail. It's gonna be a standard one, not like Dolmipieh up on the hill here. Is that correct?
I don't know what Martin's standards are. You don't like the one that's on the hill?
No, I like the one that's on the hill.
That's what we're using now. If you want to get on, that takes a little, obviously, that's...
I think the one on the hills, that styles because the snow goes under.
It is, yeah.
Okay, this, the second bid is from Griffin and Griffin Excavating North Base. Total price, $54,250 lump sum. And their work scope is, yeah, I'll let you read it, but it's, again, it's the slope and stuff. So... No, $40,000.
40,000.
Yeah.
$40,810, as opposed to $54,250. So...
So I get an email from Martin that said, he has no preference as to which contractor is chosen. He hopes the board awards a contract, awards the bid tonight, and goes to low bidder.
Well, I'd like to go with the low bidder as well. I guess the only thing, I mean, I wasn't there at the site meeting, so I don't, I'm assuming it was a slope stabilization. Slope stabilization and roadwork is the scope of work, whereas Griffin and Griffin's a bit more detailed. But I would, I guess, speak with Martin to be sure that their scope is the same scope that we're talking about. One thing we'll notice, Griffin does have used guardrail.
Does the DuBois bill have guardrail in that bid?
It does not say, either way, it's purely generic.
The less, the lesser.
Just a dollar, a foot less.
Isn't that real shiny stuff?
Yeah.
So let's just figure out the math of where we're at with this project.
Okay, so the entire project cost was $73,095.
That was the yes vote?
Pardon?
That was the yes vote?
That was the yes in it. And that was estimated after DuBois stabilized the road.
And how much have we spent so far?
We have spent $38,000.
Plus anything else, or it's just 38 straight?
I don't remember what DuBois was, but it was 38 something. Well, I've got the figures here. What you have left available in the grant is $30,833. Now, Martin estimated this work here when I did the grant. He estimated this work as being $19,258, so there's your difference. So that's what I did the...
How about, let's see, off $20,000.
We don't have the RFP that they got sent, right? We did have an RFP. Martin handed this. I have, are any of the bids broken down for gravel installment and everything?
We have gravel road 220 feet by one inch deep. Reuse existing stonefill and purchase the extra stonefill needed, 190 by 10 by two inches, or no, by two feet deep.
So Martin estimated three to five-inch stone on the outer banks. We already have four and five-inch stone tied into the river. My estimates are 511 yards of three to five-inch stone at $16.
Three to five-foot stone.
So three to five-foot stone at $16 a yard. So I don't know if they broke down any stone or whatever. But that was the estimate, was $19,258. That's what I went on the grant for. So we have $40,833. Our low bid is $40,008, right?
Right, so we've got $10,023 to make up.
That's gonna come out of our pocket, unless I can talk to Coxkey.
You know, I don't feel worried about this at all. You know, once again, DuBois doesn't come back and spell out anything. An RFP comes from the Select Board, okay, and not the road. And so, you know, bottom line, I make a motion that we throw these out.
And what would you have, another RFP?
Because I can't, I mean, I can't compare these. DuBois doesn't break anything down. Griffin and Griffin says used, used guardrail, okay? I mean, you know, so I mean, I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what the specifications were. Do we have the RFP?
I don't have it. I think Martin didn't. I didn't even know that he had asked for bids.
This is the Select Board, this is the Select Board issue.
So you made a motion?
I made a motion.
I was surprised. We said this would be off the agenda, because we didn't even know that they were doing...
So there's been a motion made. Jason seconded it. Further discussion?
I mean, I don't, like I said, I didn't go to the meeting. I know that Griffin and Jeff and Martin all met together and talked over the job. Pretty sure they all agree on quantities at that time at the meeting, so... That's all, that's, I'm sure that we could give them quantities, and it'd probably be the same as Griffin and Griffin, whatever.
I, personally, I think, to what John said, I think we need to get clarification. I don't know if we need to throw out the bids at this point, but I think we should get Martin in here to get clarification. And then, at that point, we may decide, you know, what, these are bad bids and we can have it. There's a few things that have gone wrong here. The process, although, so I can't say anything, I just don't know enough about how it all came up.
No, that's, that's...
But what I would like to do is get Martin here, ask him, and then, then we can make some decisions. That's, that's what I would do. So I would ask everyone to defeat this motion by John.
I'll withdraw the motion.
So, you all right with that?
Yeah.
And why don't we get Martin?
Second.
Gotcha.
And if we can get him...
He's supposed to be coming in the next meeting anyway about the evaluation draft.
All right, so why don't we put some extra time there in the meantime, let him know that we would like additional paperwork or backup on that.
And if I get it ahead of time, I'll...
Okay, you can send it out to us prior to the meeting, that would be...
And don't get me wrong, I mean, I, I think Martin does a great, great job, and he should be involved in the process at the final decision. I don't even have a problem with a bid that doesn't give detail, you know, as long as it's as per the RFP, and I've seen the RFP. That's exactly right.
Let's just get everything, make sure we have it.
Okay.
But it can't be one of these handshake things where we talked about it, because it's gotta be, I gotta see something and write it. Thank you, everybody. So now, we get to talk about what Kelly brought up, grievance hearings, and...
And I put that on the agenda for you, so just so that you would know who there are doing grievance meetings this week, Monday through Friday. Friday's maybe possibly Saturday, because I think Friday's about booked up too.
So I got, Cheryl called me when we were in a discussion last Thursday or Wednesday or Thursday. Made me aware of, I guess, beginning of the week, 600 letters had been sent out, roughly 600 from the listers, stating changes in appraisals or parcel sizes. And I guess the phones have been crazy since then. And you folks may have, I know Kelly, you spoke to at least your aunt, I think we've all had, probably one or two, or not, personally, or feeling it. So if anyone can make the meetings this week, I don't know if anyone is personally involved, but there's a schedule.
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
I think it's important, just kind of sit in. It goes from like nine o'clock to... I think it's important, just kind of sit in, it goes from like nine o'clock to four o'clock.
Not, not a prayer. I've heard you agreed to be on one, actually two. What is Ray wanting? He wasn't sure if it was ten or ten three.
Oh, I hope to look at the rest of the schedule.
Right, so as long as John, if someone, if you're here, like tell me when, if they're Saturday, let me know, and I could sit down. But I think it's important for the selector to get, tell you what's going on. It seems, it may be normal for this number to come back in grievance, if you sent out six hundred, how many we got back, thirty, or whatever, I don't know that number. I don't know if it's good or bad. So if we can spend a little time in those hearings, try to find what are the mistakes? I'm curious as to, is it clarifier, is it just plain shoddy work? Remember, we've paid a lot of good money to have these tax man stuff.
Both Cheryl and I had to agree on our land. And mine took Cheryl and I ten minutes to prove them wrong. It was following the deed back and we had a map.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's eighty, eighty or eighty one hearings, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday so far.
Wow. So that's, you know, obviously over ten percent, but I don't know what, what's the norm in the industry. I mean, there's got to be a norm that comes back.
They usually would have done it one day on the grievances, but also...
This has never happened before.
All of the town of Moretown's properties change except for the town hall, the size of the lots.
What?
Yeah, that's what mine was, a lot, size change.
Yeah, that all of Moretown's land, town of Moretown's land changed, the library, the old town hall, the fire department.
So have we, as a town, have we filed any grievance?
We have not. We've looked for, just today, we were going through stuff to try to find, we don't have maps of our land. So we can't file a grievance if we have nothing to prove.
But I mean, if I find an error, I'm sure I just go back to the, go back to them afterwards and they'll fix it, but I mean...
But just on the face of it, that sounds unlikely.
Just, you got, there's eleven parcels that we have, and I think we had eleven letters.
Yeah, so that's...
From what I'm hearing, the letters were dated in April, and a lot of people didn't do them till last week.
It wasn't dated, did you bring yours with you?
I didn't.
What they said was the grand list as of April 2018. There was no date on the letter.
Okay.
There's no date on the letter that they sent out?
I got a letter, and I'm not even on the grand list of owing my property.
So, but they had very little time to file a grievance.
Right.
The time they had was less than...
Letters, less than...
And she not sent out letters with no date.
Yeah.
Letters went out, not this past Friday, the Friday before. And you had to buy Monday, three o'clock today, which you're deadline for.
These are the letters.
Pardon me?
Is this a computer generated thing?
Well, they, they hand every single one of them, they, this is the one that are current use change and stuff.
So where people are getting the, on the top, this is town, Moretown, notice from taxpayer, taxpayers as of April 1st, 2018. So that, again, just the grand list, that's when that is set.
What was this big stamp, was it something?
That's when I got it myself.
You received, that's your receipt?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it.
So there's no dates on it?
Yeah, that's not, that's just not right. No data noticed, then, five twenty five.
Good.
That's what?
On that, that's the changes, current use rate. Well, that's my current use one, that's my agreed one. Is there a date on that down by your phone, Tom?
I'm looking. It just says, written appeals must be received at the town office by 3:00 PM, 6:04.
Yeah, there was no signed date.
Yeah, that, that's not right.
Yeah, that's when there's no... So I've asked Cheryl to put the listers on our next meeting as well. But again, if you guys have the opportunity to, and I know, John, you're going to go to a couple.
Cheryl and I planned to send them on some tours so we can take notes.
Is the due date statutory, or is that something that we can change? Because I don't think this is, it's very fair to mail out something at 5:25 and require a written appeal, let's explore.
That was a lot of the complaints, the first thing that was out of people's mouths when, on the calls that I got. I don't know if it's statutory.
Okay. If this is within our jurisdiction, I would want to extend that date.
I know we cannot extend the date. No, we cannot extend the date once it's been done. That's what I know, because I said the same thing when they were...
When they were mailing them out, they were originally, we're going to use the bulk rate that we use for our town reports. And the post office told them that they could not guarantee people would get them within their ten day window. So they've got some sort of ten day window they were working with, so they actually bought stamps and put them on. I first came up six hundred dollars.
All right, so we know...
So there's some ten day window in there. I'm not sure of the best of.
It's just something we need to look at. And, you know, there's just not enough information right now to say anything, that's why I just want you to, you know, if you get calls, take good notes, as far as what the problems are.
Given the timing, is, is there anything more that we can do? Because we're not going to meet again until this deadline has elapsed.
Well, deadline is today.
Today.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, they can't change, so I know that, because I asked Cheryl if they, well, I say, well, you know, could they extend the deadline? And she says, no, once they set the deadline, it's the deadline.
But it would start over again if they sent out new letters?
If they sent out new letters, it would.
Okay, so...
There's, yeah, so let's look into possible solutions to, let's find out what kind of problems we're dealing with. And are these people being... So at your meeting show, you went in, you showed them three documents or whatever.
Yeah, I had copies. I went in, I had copies of a survey from 1915. And then I had surveys, anytime we gave to kiss a piece of land or anything, we had a survey done.
Did they, are they saying you had less property than what you...
Yeah.
They were saying I had more.
And they must have made some sort of mapping there in their program.
I had surveys of everything I did, so mine was very...
Many of them...
So you went in and you said, okay, you owe me five acres.
I gave them this, I said, well, we have forty eight, forty five acres in this lot, ninety five acres in this lot, and a hundred and twenty five acres in this lot, which is a hundred and sixty five point six oh acres. Then I had the surveys, taking them off. Cheryl and we gave her ten point one oh acres, Courtney ten acres, Noe's about nine point seven two. Gary's sister got one point five two, and we sold Sanguinetti ten acres. So that left one twenty four point twenty eight acres.
Yours was a map there.
But they told you you had a hundred and two.
They told us we had, yeah. They told us we had a hundred and five, and it was a hundred and twenty four point twenty.
All right, so you went back then, you gave this information. Where, so they just gave you that acreage back, where did it come from?
Well, um...
Who did they take it from? Did they adjust someone else's that may have gotten...
Yeah, that's exactly.
So like mine, mine is connected to my neighbor, which is why I was up talking to her, because when I was going through my deeds, our deeds were actually intertwined. The land was too laid out different. So when they gave me more, they took it from her. So by proving mine, I'm proving hers.
You're proving her the less, so then they have to send out more letters because those people's property...
Is going to change again.
Are changing, yeah.
Yeah, see, they had my sister-in-law, Susan, at one, at one point four. And I had a survey in here that shows that we gave her one point five two. So I told the listers that these surveys are in the vault, I just made, I just made copies of them. So...
It'll be interesting to see what everyone's coming up with, and then we'll need to...
As far as you with the map there, we've seen people that have lost point five, we've seen people that have gained fifty acres.
Central Barrow's gained twenty two acres, and Rick probably lost some, I don't know how much he lost.
I'd like to sell that new fifty that I just got.
Right, and before your tax sale comes.
Yeah, exactly.
So I just gained twenty eighteen acres or twenty acres, whatever it was.
So there's, there's an issue, the selector is aware of it, and we need to try to figure out what it is.
And I know mine was all there, we just done wrong on the tax maps.
Right. Yeah, so we need to find where these errors are coming from, because we've spent money that we've...
Forty four thousand five dollars.
Mine was a map, too.
Yeah.
Mine was laid out on a map in the vault.
Used to be correct.
Yeah.
And you had, you got one, but yours was only like...
I went from, I had one acre, and it went down to point nine seven.
Now that you left it...
Damn, right?
But now that you left it like that and you didn't fix it, you've got a non-conforming law.
So that's true.
You have not one acre lot to build or do anything, put on a porch, put in a garage, anything.
But my deed says, you know, it measures out, my deed has got one, it's, whatever it is, two hundred and twelve and a half feet square. So I, I don't...
But that doesn't make a difference now, because now your, your property tax map says that you have less than an acre. So if you're trying to build something or do it on, the D O B or whatever, we'll just say, sorry, you can't because you don't have that.
Even though your deed says it.
The deed should cover.
Either thing.
Yeah, surveys covers.
Yeah, survey.
So that's something we need to look at, right?
Well, and I missed the deadline.
It's a lot, all right, so...
Do you have a survey?
I have a survey, but I'm not, I'm not.
Well, whoever got your land...
Just bring it in, drop it off, and then I'm sure that they'll fix it for you, Ray, but that's not good to have a non-conforming law.
Yeah, I have one, it stinks.
And maybe just show me what you have.
Point nine seven.
All right, so let's move along, move along to the next one. So five, is there any other new business? Seen none, just wanted, we have some things to sign. Cheryl, can you just check in with Ron on the real compost appeal to the environmental court? And I know you sent out an article that was on Vermont Dig, the legislature has changed. You know, so that, that really is, yeah, has taken care of that, but they, they probably will just ignore what the court, at this point, it's really...
You saw that Moretown landfill was fined two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, that was, it was based on the sludge, remember that they took him?
Oh, okay, going back a few years.
I am going to bring back up Facebook and the social media at the next meeting, because now there's a much more comprehensive social media policy you guys can look at. And I'm going to send it to you ahead of time in hopes that you will approve it at the next meeting.
And we, I think last night we talked, we weren't, we had wanted to wait a little time, so I think you got some traction there.
Yeah.
The social media policies you should have anyway, the social media policies for...
Everything.
For, um... For front of forum and, you know, for website, everything.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a bit...
It's a whole different subject than the Facebook.
All right.
Pick it on the ball.
So we got some new permits, it looks like, and everything, winter maintenance to the town hall.
That was she had talked about, that's truck seating.
And also, that's what we've already basically done, right?
That's what we've done, that's for next year, you know, that they, for that amount of money, they'll clean both furnaces. Then we'll end up with an eight hundred dollar, nine hundred dollar bill.
And the other stuff is still standing in there, all right.
You done with me?
We are. Cheryl, thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks, Rob.
Just everyone else, those...
Was that, was that sludge, John?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
John, thanks for getting in to sign these.
No, sure.
I'm going to have a payroll warrant next, Sunday, Tuesday, because we're all...
I wonder, I just wanted to show you what Katrina put together for Shane. And nice little binder here, but...
Oh, okay.
As we mark the track, but... Agreement with the Maine Society. What I like is now there's everything, there's a warrant, someone has a complaint, you can fill it out, they get a copy. If there's another dog involved or animal, they get a copy, and the town can keep a copy as well, so we'll have more.
And I have a whole box of those, you know, that's funny.
Just so there's... Yeah. So we'll get in touch with him to make sure he uses it.
Oh, you don't pay him too?
Getting that with a little kick in the butt sometimes.
Yes, because he also has not billed us for this quarter, so Cheryl told me to tell you that, too.
Okay. All right.
Okay, do you want me to get this so you can read it? He told me, so this company made it, this, the disinfectant thing, and he bought it. I meant like the owner's son, who he came down, and he thought it was such a great product. Sure. He bought the company.
Let's just pay real one.
The window for the town hall is supposed to be eleven, but it was supposed to be in this week, but it got deleted. I talked to Billy this morning.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. We'll be done in just a moment here, we're just waiting to close out a couple signatures. A little motion for John to close this up.
John.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.